I don't know if there are any in what.
Yeah.
My husband's.
He can add questions.
Our. Part of it.
What you. So that's. The other one.
Thank you. It's four. It's four. Yes. Yes.
Everybody. Sorry. Everybody has been.
People. It's like. Yeah. We shut up. The time.
Like.
Oh, they're all saying.
I just. I don't need that. I'm.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. I also do. The. Need a lot. I believe this. So I think. The best. And the main. Which is just. But I. As a solution. But I'm. Maybe. The. Something. So. Oh, God. Yeah. Hello, Virginia. I'm going to put you on hold, please. Thank you. Thank you. Yes. Yes.
Hello.
Hello, Scott. It's Judith from Morrisville. How are you?
I am well. How are you?
I'm well. I'm going to put you on hold, okay?
Sure. No problem.
Thank you so much.
Yep. Hello, Judith.
Hello, Scott. How are you?
I'm well.
I believe I have everyone on conference at this time. Uh, Scott, I have you. Do I have Scott H? Do I have Virginia? Hmm. Scott, if you could hold on, please, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Virginia, are you there?
I am.
Scott, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Scott Robinson, are you there? Okay. Hold on another minute, please.
Were you able to just hear me or not? I thought I was on.
Oh, okay. I thought I did it incorrectly. So I have. I have Scott R., Scott H., and Virginia.
Yes, I heard. I heard Virginia and Scott. Judith are coming through on the phone.
Thank you all. We're going to begin.
A call to order the special meeting of the Borough of Mar- Morrisville Council for Tuesday, October 26th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic of which is this nation, one nation under God, indivisible, with which we trust.
All right. Roll call, please.
Mayor Rehman. Councilman Doward.
Here.
Councilwoman Hala.
Here.
Councilman Parker.
Here.
Councilman Paul.
Here.
Councilman Robinson. Councilwoman Sherlock.
Here.
And Councilman Yeager.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to move on to hearing of the public. I don't have it in front of me, so I know Jane signed it. Okay.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jane Berger, 90, West Main Avenue, Morrisville Borough resident. Um, just have a couple of questions to clarify for me. I know the EIT proposed has a $12,000 floor. For an income be low, which no one would have. Question was, if someone earns over $12,000, does their tax start at $12,001 or does it start back from $1? One question. There's some concern, the half percent versus the 1% because even though we've heard the school and officials said things that, um, at least a half percent, we know would stay with Morris will not go to the school. I know they have a school board meeting tomorrow and it might allay the residents' fears regarding one versus a half percent if, and I'm going to try to get to the meeting tomorrow night, if they would take a statement, kind of what Mrs. Sherlock had already shared that she's heard from the school board president, that they're really not interested for a lot of technical and legal reasons of going before the, uh, the earned income tax. I think they have to lower property taxes by it. So I just want to share that. I'm retired and it won't pay, so I think it would be really inappropriate for me to, to go strong away, one way or the other, because I won't pay for it, but I do not envy the decisions you have in putting out these two proposed budgets. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who hasn't signed up who wishes to speak? Would you like to speak?
Right.
Okay. Come forward, sir.
John DeWilde, 94 West Main, Olin, Morrisville. If there's going to be any discussion tonight about the EIT again, I would just ask that I don't, I, again, from last week, I don't believe that it's a, there are, there are people who could be for it, and I think we just need to see that the new administration can manage the money that we give you. We're really, we're your, we're your bankroll, and it's just not a fair for the residents to keep passing money to the council when it has, in the past, been used for personal agendas. So if, if we could see that there's good stewardship of our, of our money, and then you're coming back to us and saying, "We need this," I think it would be better received.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay.
Catherine Panzita, 401 Hellcrest Avenue. I have a procedural question. Um, there is going to be an election and then council's going to change, and in this year, isn't this the year then that you can reopen your budget? Come January. So in light of that, my question is, where does that stand on an EIT? What legally would have to happen? Does this mean if this council currently, which if you're staying, going, running for reelection, i- it's part of your job to come up with a, a balanced budget by December 31st, where does that procedurally leave the next future council who has to live with this budget as an EIT? Would they then have the option to bring it up in January inside? We want an EIT, and then would it be able to go into effect in four months with your, you know, would you have to post it? Could you add it? Could you change it? Or is it a done deal for the entire fiscal year 2022? That's my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. And Scott, yeah, you could. I'd like to know myself.
Scott, I can answer the majority of that, but I was hoping you would touch upon that.
Scott? Scott H.?
Yeah. Yeah. Sorry. What are you doing? Is there a question?
It was brought up in public comment, but Judith said she can answer some of it and.
So I'll backtrack, Scott. It is my understanding that due to the election year, that we could reopen the budget in January? And if.
Yes, that could, at a possibility.
And then a new vote could take place regarding the EIT tax to put that in place if it were posed?
Yeah. Some of these, some of these tax ordinances can, it can be done like for a six-month, sort of, if you vote, start at the new year or at the six-month mark. Um, we'd have to double check to make sure the EIT is one of them, uh, because there's different rules for a lot of the different taxes that fall under Act 5 of the West, but we would double check to make sure it is a possibility that it could be if it's a ticket, yes.
But I do have one question. So, but the budget, if the budget passes without an EIT, then starting January 1st, we would go, we'd have to go with that budget until it was, until it was, if it could be even reopened?
That's right. Yeah. If we were to pass the budget without an EIT, that would continue unless.
So we would still be, we would still be doing the cuts and furloughs in the budget that's finally passed?
That would, you know, obviously, this would be under the discretion of the manager in how to manage the budget and when those things would take place, but until it would be reopened and a new budget would be passed, you would have to follow the budget that was passed in, we'll say, this year with this council.
Okay. That answers my question.
Thank you, Scott.
28. Might I say something?
I'll, I'll allow it. Name and address, and then you have three minutes.
My name is Jim Schwartz, 580 Rosemore Drive. Um, I've been at these meetings now for, I don't know, since May. I've heard all sorts of stuff. Um, I'm a little concerned because I believe that the budget and the borough both need to be protected. Um, right now, I'm not working, but I will be working soon again, and that 1%, we're acting like it's a big deal, but if you compare it to having less police officers, is that 1% really worth it? I, I'm going to tell you right now, whether I get elected or not, I couldn't care less. It's worth it. We're not going to have less police officers on the street. We're just not going to happen. I'm not going to stand for whether I'm in office or not in office. I'm not putting up with it. So I'm going to fight that. We're going to have to figure out how to help Judith. I want to help Judith the, the best I can, and I think everybody in the borough needs to support Judith and try to figure out how we can get money, how we can balance the budget and stay solid and still have our police officers. That's my biggest thing. Safety of the borough is the biggest thing for me, and I'm telling you, we don't support our police officers, we're going to be in a world of hurt because I've heard through the grapevine that Lower Makefield and, and Yardley and Falls, they do not want to give us any more support. So if we lose officers, they're going to be like, "Hey, we're not going to cover you more. We're already doing enough." This is what I'm hearing through the grapevine. Again, it's hearsay, but trust me, it's on pretty good grounds of what I'm saying. So I'm done, but please, let's work together and figure out a way how to keep the police intact, and let's keep this borough going forward, okay? Thank you very much.
All right. Uh, we're going to definitely close out public comment now and move on to finance. Um, what I'm going to do is we're going to, I'm going to ask for the motion, and then we are going to have a discussion which will allow us to talk about the budget, so. Um, for A, a motion to advertise. Are we advertising both budgets? We've never heard of that.
Both budgets.
And I don't know which one is which.
Yeah.
If the motion is kind of, is kind of A, which is A, which is B, it doesn't.
So we will make budget with EIT A. Budget with no EIT B.
So we're going out of this meeting still not knowing what budget we have.
So unless someone makes a decision on council.
Think council made the decision, though, didn't it? That we, we made a decision not to have any IT. That's why I'm, I'm confused as to what we're actually doing at this point.
And my, my question is.
Point of order, don't we need to make a motion and second it? It'll be able to discuss.
You have a motion. All right. For A, a motion to advertise for two proposed preliminary budgets, Option A and Option B for the 2022 fiscal year. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion in a second. All right. Now we can have more in-depth discussion. This wasn't what I thought we were doing yesterday.
We did it.
And I'm kind of confused. I mean, I, I'm assuming, Scott, we can have two budgets as a preliminary budget?
No.
Yeah. Yeah. The idea of the preliminary budget is part of the borough code. The idea is to have it out there. Um, it's a ministerial action to advertise it, but you're having it out there, you're notifying the public so they can come and inspect it. Um, changes can be made after the fact, but the idea is here we have a situation where we have two possibilities we are already aware of, so we're giving the public more notice of what those changes could be after the fact, whereas if we were just to advertise one, we're not providing them with how the other one would look right away. This way, we're giving more notice of what we're doing. As I said, the advertising itself is a ministerial action. The idea is to notify the public that the budgets are available for, the budget, excuse me, is available for review. But like I said, because changes can happen after that preliminary budget, here we're providing extra notice to the public that's saying, "Hey, we looked at our budget. Here's where we're at. Here's the potential changes that could occur." So we're, the idea of advertising two would just be to provide more notice to the public.
One second. One second. All right. So we're, the motion is for just to advertise them. It's not what I was expecting. I would like to hear comments, but at this point, I'm ready to just make the motion after discussion and go home. Because this is not what I thought we were doing tonight, and obviously, it's being kicked down, it's being kicked down the road even more, and I don't have, I, I don't have the patience to keep doing this. I just don't. All right. Nancy, go ahead.
Put on one.
I thought so too, but obviously, we're not, so.
You're in charge. You're in charge.
Let's just do the motion at this point.
You can't change it, though.
We can't. It's the motion that's been advertised.
Mr. President, if I may. You have the motion on the floor that's been made to advertise one. If someone would prefer a council to amend it, that only one be advertised, that can be done. You don't have to continue down this. Your motion to make as council is your prerogative. You have one that you would prefer to advertise, that motion can be made.
And if, and if it fails, then I guess the other one happens?
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that?
I said if, if that fails, if we're doing one at a time, the first one fails and the second one gets a vote, and maybe that one passes. But I, I don't think we should be advertising both.
What?
I have a question.
Yeah. Do you do it that way?
Uh, Mr. Holbert, exactly how would this work? So, um, as Nancy's saying, so if one votes down, the other one goes in. If, if we've already voted on the EIT and it's been voted down, doesn't somebody who voted it down need to move to re, um, to, to reconsider it in order for it to even go anywhere? So we're literally sitting here looking at, at a potential vote for something that there's, there's no guarantee that, that somebody who voted no for it is willing to, um, turn around and change their vote and move it to, to be reconsidered? So how does that work?
That is true. It, it, there, well, it could be, it could be a member who voted it down. That is correct. It also could be, uh, right now, we had a member resigned and someone.
We haven't accepted that resignation, though.
The term, they could also introduce there as well. There's two.
Okay. I understand. Okay.
Right now, we're not considering a budget. We're considering.
Right. To advertise.
And that's where we're at.
Yep.
So I.
It would work in, it would work in the sense that we're advertising it, but I understand what Councilman Yeager's saying, that if it gets to the point where no one reintroduces the EIT ordinance.
Then we can't do it.
China can't move forward with that draft.
But we don't have to, we don't have to have that decision at this point.
At that point yet, so right now, we're just at the advertising stage.
So the budget presented to us today, um, the one with no EIT. Judith? Um, the budget introduced today, the one with no EIT, there were some questions yesterday about what the millage was, so I see today it's at 35 mills. Is that including any of the officers back?
It's only $88,000.
No, it is not. So you went from 33 and a third to 35. Where did that money go?
First thing I look at.
Yeah.
Spread out over administration and all the properties.
Well, I can understand, but what specifically, like, like?
You're right. You're on the right path.
Yeah. Like what in administration is more important than our officers?
Because you do not have enough money with the millage to have the officers. We cut with such dramatic cuts, and not only that, yesterday, prior to the printout of what you received, we did a line-by-line adjustment. What you received last night was not what we had worked on in truity because there were adjustments that were made regarding social security. I can go line by line. Insurances. We also made an adjustment with items of incoming revenue because it was not as accurate as we believed it should be. So we made adjustments there. We made adjustments with special revenues to be more accurate. I can go line by line if you'd like me to. But the calculations were complete regarding six full-time total officers.
So what, what is the expense to bring two officers back?
May I look for one second? Judith, can you?
Judith, can you turn the volume on that phone down a little bit or something? Because I'm getting a lot of echo in here. I'm having a little difficult time hearing.
Certainly, I will.
Also, can you email this to me? Am I in the?
It was emailed to you, yes.
It was.
I didn't get it.
The cover sheet that everyone asked for was emailed.
We didn't get that.
Say again?
The cover sheet that everyone asked for.
Unless it just went out, we didn't get anything today.
It went out like an hour and a half ago.
No.
It looks like it came out at 6:29, Judith.
I might not have seen it at that point.
Scott, is that better?
I got it. Yeah, that's better like that. Now I can hear you clear before I could go to hear you.
Sure.
Okay. All I received in my email was the agenda, the special meeting. I didn't receive any, anything else.
At 6:29, there was an email.
That was in the box, the agenda was dropped in box.
Right, I got the email saying that the agenda was dropped in box.
You should have something from finance at Morrisville at 6:29.
I don't know why it took so long to get there.
Okay, 6:29. Okay, there's the cover sheet there.
Yeah, we did it earlier today. The request was to email that and we did.
Judith?
Now, I don't want to, I don't want to sound like I'm complaining because I'm not complaining, but, and I realize you have your hands full with this, but the meeting started at 6:00 and this is emailed at 6:29.
As I was saying, it was sent out much earlier, at least an hour and a half prior to the meeting. I'm not sure what's going on or why you didn't receive it.
I'm having difficulty hearing.
Okay.
It's an hour and a half, that's hard.
So a question, Judith.
Point of order, I had a question first, I'm sorry. Yeah, I just.
Certainly, if I may.
I'm done talking, just carry on.
I'd like to make this. I got a couple too. But I just want everybody to understand that we just need to advertise this the 28th.
Tomorrow.
Right. And so we can have other budget meetings. This budget is not in stone. We're still formulating it. So we can have another several budget meetings before our November meeting. I mean, we could squeeze it at least two if need be. So, I mean, just understand that. So this is just simply a vote to, you know, I know we really don't want to push the one with however you feel on the EIT, one way or the other, but I think the public deserves the to see, you know, and we can at least advertise that and then at least have another budget meeting or two to go over the numbers in finer detail. I mean, this whole rushing everybody to get back, you know, less than 24 hours later, it seems to be with what we have down in the office, the copier, the computers, the software, you know, we're having difficulties getting things corrected properly. And I think maybe the best option would be just to do the motion as it is and then just schedule some budget meetings after this and after the, you know, first week in November.
I totally get what you're saying, Ted. I do think that if we have a couple of things we could throw out right now to make this better, I would really appreciate the opportunity to do that.
Could you please ask Scott Holbert as to how we could go about that to make sure that we're in compliance because of timing? Because from what I believe, as of today, we would need to advertise the preliminary.
That's what I'm, that was my suggestion though.
Sure.
Is that we do the motion as advertised and then, Scott, are you there?
Which Scott?
Holbert.
Yes, I'm here.
All right, so if we make the motion tonight as it's written, I'm just, this is just me making a suggestion, we can still have budget meetings after this to work on a final?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you can fill out budget meetings after this. The only caveat would be is from the time of the advertisement, when it's in the paper, it's a period of 10 days that you have to let them look at it before you could be ready to make any, starting to make changes. So that would be the only caveat, it's just a 10-day period.
10-day period to examine the, examine the two budgets and then.
I'm sorry.
It would be 10 days from the advertisement of the budget for the public to view the, to view the budgets and then we can start scheduling meetings again? I understand that right?
I mean, you can start scheduling meetings ahead of time as well. I was just saying, if you were planning to make any changes during the budget hearings, it would have to be outside of the 10-day hearing. You could have, you could have these to continue to discuss, but any changes would have to come after that first 10 days.
Okay.
So if I may, the only concern that I have is if we change the preliminary budget, if we make changes, must that be advertised again as a preliminary budget and be in public review for another 10 days?
So that's where the borough differs from, that's where the borough differs from the borough code, excuse me, differs from some of the township law. Generally, yes, that's a requirement, but under the borough code, once you get through that preliminary budget, and once you get through that preliminary budget in that time for review, we talked about the ability to make changes then. And there is no, so once you advertise the preliminary budget, once you're changing it and you're amending it, you're allowed to do it after that period without further advertising. You wouldn't have to go back.
So we would basically be able to just adopt a budget, either A or B, at the December meeting then?
Yeah, council is ready to adopt the budget as they, yeah, you could do that.
And if there are changes, no other advertisement will be needed?
That is correct.
Same point. Let me ask one question. Scott, is there any limitation on how different that final budget can be? I mean, can we have drastic changes such as all of a sudden throwing in EIT or not? Or is it completely up to our discretion as to what changes we make?
Same thing, this is one of the areas where the borough code is helpful. No, it doesn't have those restrictions like in the township code. On the township code, if you increase the revenues or expenditures by a certain amount, you have to re-advertise it then. Here, it's the exact language of the statute says, after the expiration of the 10 days, council shall make the revision in the budget as deemed advisable. Not written exactly well, but if you're going to make revision to the budget, amend it, if you deem it advisable, you're able to after that 10-day period. And then, once it's ready for final adoption, with the balanced budget, you're able to do that.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, Scott. Ms. Halaal, will you finish with your question?
No.
Go ahead, sorry. I just wanted to see where we were with this.
That's okay.
So you're looking for two full-time officers. One full-time officer would be 92, 81845, times that by two.
And that's all in? That's what our expenses would include?
No.
Well, that's what I'm asking. What is, what expended, what is the increase in expenses for two full-time officers?
So you'd be looking at the 92, 81845 times two, you would be looking at 30,000, 82128 and another 31,000, 13148.
So for one officer, it would be 92 plus the 30 plus the 30?
Correct. 31, I would say 31, 31 and 31. So it'd be 92, 81845, yes. Thank you. And that is just a flat fee. That's not your social security, it's not all your other costs.
So I'm sorry, so what costs, what's the 30.8 and 31 change?
The 30,000, 82128 is medical benefits. The 31, 13148 is medical benefits. Health, dental, life.
I'm sorry, I'm just confused. So it's 92,000 twice and then 30,000, 821 and 30,000, 131?
92, 81845, I would say that's 93 twice. Then, depending on the officer, 30,000, 821.28 once, 31,131.48 once. Health benefits now go by your age, unfortunately. So they're different.
So for all these increase in health costs, are any of the borough workers taking a bite out of those or is it all being picked up by the borough?
All of the borough workers take a bite out of that and they contribute to their health benefits except for the police department.
I know that you're in the middle of contracts, negotiations, but is that something that we can address?
It has been added to the list of items on our behalf, yes. But we're trying to just do a one-year extension at this time. So if we do that, it would not be addressed until after the one-year extension.
So for the two officers, it's $246,000.
And more.
What is the and more?
Social security benefits.
So my question once again is what is the total cost for an officer?
I do not have a line-by-line item for you this evening. Because it was out of the ballpark, it just was showing salaries and medical benefits alone.
Mr. Parker?
Ms. Diager.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Actually, my question, I don't know where we're going with the EIT, but I do have the two questions. One that Jane had asked, which I thought was, you know, important. And the other one was, we never found out exactly how much were to be charged for collecting. Were you able to find that out?
It was, it was around 3% would most likely be about 8 or $9,000.
Thank you.
That's already taken out of. I'm sorry, did someone say something?
Oh, no, I think that was the officer's radio. Well, I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
That was already taken out of the amount of money that we believe you would collect.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. And I apologize, I don't.
You've been more than patient.
Thank you.
Jane's question.
So if it seems confusing to everybody, it really isn't that hard. I'm not sure why we're struggling so hard to have specific numbers, but I've gone through this already before. It's about $130,000 per. And to Judith's point, there are some variations for, for instance, if somebody doesn't use a whole lot of medical benefits, they don't, they don't go to the doctor often, they're not getting their deductible reimbursed. So there are some things that are kind of variable. So it's hard to put an exact dollar on it, but it's about 130,000 per. And obviously, for a newer officer, it's a little cheaper because it comes in much lower of a base pay, but over the course of five years, it escalates very quickly and gets to the, I think it's five years and gets, Justin, is that five?
I think it's like three.
It's actually one year.
Is it three?
Is it three or one?
Okay.
I wanted to ask the chief because.
Great, okay. I was off, I apologize.
It's like a $20,000 a year jump every year.
But there is a.
But, and that's why I'm saying one year, each year in increments, it doesn't wait till three years.
Here's where I have my biggest problem. This is not an issue of EIT or we can't do anything. I'll give you an example, just one specific example. The rec fund. The rec fund does not have a cap. There's no cap on the rec fund from a millage perspective. Our whole problem is in the general fund. The general fund is maxed out at 35. You can't even get a court to approve you beyond 35 or we got to go to the court to get that. But there are other funds, and I'm going to specifically say the rec fund, where Public Works does stuff at the park and so forth, and we pull money from the rec fund to pay portions of salaries. There is no reason why some of that can't be moved over to the rec fund and help support other employees, so it frees money in the general fund. So when we're sitting here saying it's all or nothing, guys, this is the hyperbole I was talking about yesterday. It's not. Because there is no difference from the millage rate in the rec fund in this, in this right here than there has been in a couple of years. So as we sit here and sit, go ahead.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I don't want, I do believe that there has been changes.
I just pulled up the 2020 and it was the same millage rate as you have listed here.
Okay.
So we didn't do anything to manage that.
The millage rate may be the same, and I don't mean to interrupt you. The millage rate may be the same, although the percentages that are.
That's not what I'm saying though. So you could take a bigger percentage of his salary if he's doing more outside and doing more with the parks to cover a salary of Public Works, which then in turn frees money up in the general fund.
And that's exactly what I believe has been done.
It hasn't because you're at four and a half mils here and you're at four and a half mils last year. So you didn't increase it from last year's budget to say that you're going to pull more to try to offset costs.
I'm going to.
I understand what you're saying. From a percentage perspective, you may have transferred more of a percentage to it. You can.
Well, you're not, you have to be very careful at how you do things. And I do believe, from what I saw, percentage-wise, as to the amount of salary that is coming out of water, the amount that's coming out of recreation, the amount, we do already have. We have everyone's salary coming out of each department, all of ours. And I believe those percentages have been worked on and there is a.
And those percentages would remain the same if it was four and a half mils or five and a half mils, right? So it doesn't change the percentage of what's allocated, it just, it changes the amount that's available.
I believe the way the budget is set up for Morrisville is these percentages, these mils are what you have in place and that's just showing you the amount of monies that you must put aside for.
No.
That department.
No, that's, this is how you come up with the total millage that you charge the residents.
Right, but what I'm saying is the, the street lighting fund, two mils must go to the street lighting.
That's correct.
That's what I'm saying.
Yes.
So if I'm not saying.
But the street lighting fund can be increased. The millage in the, in the street lighting fund can be increased, right?
It can, but we cannot utilize the street lighting fund.
Unless we're fixing streetlights, right?
Unless we're fixing streetlights. And I believe, I believe, from what I have reviewed in these budgets, that you are maxed out pretty much to where everything is in its own section of area of what you're saying.
You're basing that on though?
I'm sorry.
What are you basing that on?
I'm basing it on a sheet that I do have and I'm hoping.
Are you going to share it with us?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, great.
Yes.
But to Mike's point, that is also true because if you look at the police salaries, they do have dollars set assigned for special events and that could go into the rec fund. Because that really is recreational. When somebody has an event at the park, somebody has.
Any related?
Yeah, somebody has a parade. So those salaries of those officers could move into the rec fund.
I don't, well, I have to, I'd like to check on that because if we're using that monies to pay the officer to do the special event, then it's a salary. It's not, it's not recreational.
And if you look at your rec funds, you're always, every year, you are needing money in certain funds. So I did look there. Recreation was one of them. The other one was library, that's, and street lighting. Those funds, every year, have a deficit. So if you look at your prior budgets, because I've already tried to...
And to your point, if there's a deficit, that's where the increase in millage should come from, right? Because then we're spending more than we're taxing. And again, go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, no, and I believe that even if you raised your millage in other areas, I still don't think you're going to achieve. Because I've, exactly what you're talking about is the avenue that I've been working on, on top of this. I don't believe we can still achieve the amount of funds that you're looking for. And I'm just going to mean that. If we were just trying to achieve, and I hate to put it just, if we were trying to achieve a public works person with a salary of $55,000 and $30,000, even that is hard to achieve with maneuvering these funds.
Right.
And that's all I'm trying to try to say.
I'm not disagreeing that it would be difficult. I'm not disagreeing that it won't fix everything. My point is, we haven't done that at all. And we're talking about an EIT, and we haven't done it even to the level that we could.
But you're talking about more tax increases.
I understand that. I'm also talking about, I'm also, see, well, I'm here. I just want to make sure everybody, including yourself, is clear. This isn't about cutting police and being happy about it, wrenching my hands in the back office and going, hee-hee-hee, I'm destroying the borough. This is, it's a bigger picture than that, right? We have an issue, which the chief made clear with our contracts, right? That's a problem, that we aren't doing anything to address. We have an issue, which was spoken about last night, that which we kind of knew was coming. The MMA is going to be pulling back funds. So we've talked about in these meetings before that, well, the idea would be to put in the EIT and lower taxes. Well, I got news for everybody. It'll just be treading water. And then in 2024, we're going to be sitting right, or I'm not going to be, but somebody's going to be sitting right here. And I'm trying to, I'm trying not to kick the can that far down the lane and say, we've got to, we've got to stop putting Band-Aids on, maybe feel the pain for a year or two until we can get other politicians in the area at different levels to agree that this isn't working, just like we're doing with the school. Look how long it's taken the school to get to the point where there may actually be some movement there. It takes years. But we're not doing anything towards it because we're just going to put a Band-Aid on it. I'm sorry. My heart bleeds for the people that it affects. It does not affect me personally. My heart bleeds for those people. Nancy mentioned about the 12,000, or, I'm sorry, Jane mentioned about the people making $12,000 a year. I'm going to try to hold this back. You cannot change that. Nancy, I know you mentioned that, well, maybe we could raise that threshold. You cannot. If you read the legislation, it starts at $12,000 a year.
Yes, I saw...
Those people are not helped, they need help. And we're talking about taking more money out of their pocket. I don't care if you look at it and say, oh, it's not much. Tell that person when they don't have their car payment or their ability to pay rent, that that $120 didn't matter to them. It matters, I'm telling you, it matters. So my heart bleeds for those folks. That said, none of the other, the rest of this is not at all emotional for me. This is business. That said, this body can, is going to end up doing what it's going to do. But at the end of the day, there are people that are going to be dramatically affected by this. And that doesn't mean I want to have less police presence. I'd love to have more police presence, but we're not doing enough to make sure that happens. Because in 2024, when there's another reduction, we're going to be right back here going, having the same conversation. But you're not going to have an EIT to pull from because you're already going to have spent it. So then what? Do we dissolve the borough? Is that where we're heading? Because that's what it looks like we're doing here, because we're not going to make any steps. I'm trying to at least give some resolution where you could free some money up, feel the pinch a little bit, but still manage the borough in a way where we have at least minimal services. I'm not comfortable having one officer out there. I don't think anybody is. But the bottom line is, at some point, we might have none.
And I'm trying to do exactly what you're talking about.
I know you are. This is not beating you up. I'm not trying, just got here, this is not your fault.
And I just want to explain, all the things that you're talking about and expressing, I've touched upon a lot of them. And big numbers are not jumping out at me to be able to do that. Or I would be, I would be working 10 extra hours just to try to provide that. So sincerely, that is why you have what you have before you. And I must ask, because I've thought about all of these items that you're talking about, and I'm really happy that you are. Because I've kept those items to myself because I thought, well, why didn't anybody try these things before? So I'd like to ask that question. Why wasn't this tried before?
This was. We were moving in that direction four years ago, and this council changed directions two years ago.
Thank you.
There's your answer.
No, and again, I'm not here to lay blame. I'm just trying, you know, trying to figure out...
It sounds like it, Mr. Yeager. Now, two years, what was the big shift in years?
The big shift was in the difference, it was in the difference in the direction on how we were managing and hiring personnel. That's what the shift was.
I don't believe that we hired more people. I think we stayed people-neutral.
You immediately hired somebody back.
I had one officer back.
That's correct. That was setting the stage for wanting to hire additional and...
And then we eliminated one officer who...
Eliminated positions...
Recently, yes.
A year ago.
Last year was one.
Okay, so we hired him and then we deleted one.
Positions that are not coming back under this current budget.
Were you, were you moving in the direction of minimizing and looking for other resources? Or were you moving in a direction of rebuilding?
Well, I believe we were moving into the same direction. You were, perhaps in a different way. Because I agree that I didn't believe in the sidewalk program, but there were other things that I believed in. But unfortunately, Mr. Mitchell became ill, and I think that stalled a lot of things.
And so from my understanding, we're down officers compared to how we've been in years. We're also down public works people compared to what we've had in years. I believe, and I can't quote numbers, but I think you're looking at, somebody holding...
That's situational, isn't it?
Five?
Five. And six, seven years.
And how many officers? How many officers are we down?
At least two.
Oh, right now, two.
Two, so we're down two officers, five public works, one librarian, one office person in the office. I'm not sure, and again...
But we, but we voted and we agreed that, we didn't do it, thank God, but we agreed that we were going to hire two more officers, right? So this was not a plan of restructuring, right? It was a plan of rebuilding.
Well, I have to tell you this. I'm being interviewed by...
We weren't adding two new officers.
Rebuilding.
We were replacing officers who had left.
That's rebuilding, yes, I agree.
And I have to say this. I was being interviewed by all of you, and I said to everyone, I looked at your budget online and I said, please do not hire anyone until I get there, because I don't believe you can afford to.
Yes, you didn't.
And I still stand by that. No offense to anyone. Just a professional synopsis of where you're headed and what you have in front of you. So I guess I'm confused as to why that even started. Because we could not afford it. We shouldn't have done it. We spent money on legal, we've spent money on items, advertisements. We're spending money on things that, to, and I'm not sure if it's to appease people or if it's because we wish we could do it.
Let her finish.
I'm listening on the way right now, and I'm having trouble hearing it on the phone. So I'm doing the YouTube on the iPad and everything in my truck. I'm driving right now, I have a difficult hearing. But listen, Tom McGyger, the, whenever we were going to hire these two officers, okay, we didn't hire them, so it didn't cost us any money. We're down two top-rate officers. We brought back one officer at first year rate. And when we were doing this back in May and June, no one said to us, we can't afford this, you can't afford this. The finance director, I've challenged Micah right now, if he ever said one word to me, if he ever said, Scott, you can't hire those two officers, okay? I know you want to, because we need them, but no one ever said, we can't hire those two officers. Listen, this is crazy, okay? It's October 26th right now, and we had our first meeting like a week or two weeks ago, and we're talking with this doomsday budget. Nobody said in September or August or July or June, going back.
I beg to differ. I know that I've been saying this since I walked through the door and even before I walked through the door.
I don't know what this plan is that we're talking about.
And I'm pretty sure Micah has said that.
We didn't hire anybody. If we didn't have this seismic shift, we probably would have had five police officers laid off. Because looking at the handout tonight that I got from George, that was the plan a couple of years ago. And we'd be really screwed right now if we got rid of those police officers. Now Judith, I have a question for you. How far apart are we right now? Because supposedly last week, we were 500,000. We whittled that down to 220,000. We got 75 from the MMA, okay? So we're like around 150,000. Now, last night's number, I don't know even how this could be, I, it's embarrassing that we got a proposal or budget last night. We don't even know if it's 33. whatever mils or 35 mils, okay? If we, if we're at the top billage rate, 35 mils, okay, 75 dollars from the authority, how much are we apart right now? How, what is the dollar amount that we're looking at?
What's the difference?
Because if we do a 1% EIT, that could be a couple hundred thousand dollars. There's no way we're a couple hundred thousand dollars apart right now. How, what is the dollar amount? How much are we off by?
Scott, let her answer.
Yes, it is embarrassing what happened last night, and I had no control over that. I'm dealing with archaic equipment, archaic, anyway. What you have before you today, this evening, in front of you, with a 1.65 mil increase, this is draft three, with no EIT, with cuts and the tax increase, the 1.65 millage rate increase, as long as it is approved with the county. We must go to court for that. It does not include two officers, and it does not include one public works person. So we are off $130,000 approximately, as we've been told, per officer. And I will have to look for the public works personnel information. Does that answer your question?
I honestly don't know how we're supposed to see that from these two. Because I look at the wage data sheets in the EIT version and the non-EIT version, and they look identical. Am I missing something?
Because the wage data sheet just shows you what it's going to cost you for those individual persons. We didn't add anyone. And you are correct. With the EIT, it should have been added.
Yes.
I apologize.
It's okay.
But I just gave you the information.
What is it with the EIT sheet?
The EIT sheet should just basically show you exactly what I informed you of.
Which is what?
Which is the 92, 81845. Two of those added to the officers on the wage sheet. But again, that doesn't show you all the other items. It's just wages.
We, we've been told before that it's a guideline, that is a guideline, but it doesn't tell you what's in the budget.
Correct. It's just a guideline, that's true. Okay, here's what your manager makes. Here's what your police chief makes. Here's what your superintendent of public works makes.
But it also lists how many of each are...
It does.
Approved by council, which is, are you supposed to just memorize it? Or where else would it be articulated?
Mr. Yeager is correct. We should have had, that should have been in here, and I apologize.
Thank you.
So are you saying that the figure for those were not in the budget? Is that what you're saying?
The figures are in the budget correctly.
That's what I was trying to say before.
Yes.
You told us that the manning table is one thing. I get it, it's a guideline. You want to have five officers, 10 officers, whatever it is. But it's what you actually are putting on paper as far as the budget wages, the salaries, is what we're supposed to be going by.
Correct. It's what's in the budget.
And yeah, just a quick comment regarding the EIT. Former borough manager, Scott Mitchell, he asked, actually asked about the EIT two years ago and last year. So this is not something new. I mean, he saw where we were going with this and felt that it was necessary. I just didn't know if everybody remembered that or not.
Actually, to correct you, I was the first to talk about it and asked for it to be reviewed in the finance committee meeting. So that's not entirely accurate.
Well, I didn't try to take it away from you. I'm just saying that he was managing, he was doing the budget, and that was, it was brought up. So I have a question. What are we voting on tonight?
We're voting on the motion.
The motion, which will advertise both, is that correct? Now, and the tax increase, how much is the tax? Have we calculated what the tax increase will be? If this, if we use no EIT with the tax increase and cuts, what actually will...
1.65.
1.65, real estate tax increase.
Well...
That will take up to your maximum of 35 mils.
So I was talking about the average homeowner, what they're going to have to...
Oh, I apologize.
That's what I'm looking for.
$60, $65.
Well, I think it's more than that, 1.65, did you say?
Yes.
Times 59?
1.65, times 59.
So the tax increase will be, okay, we'll use Mike's figure, $65,000.
Not 1,000.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, 65, yeah. We're working big numbers tonight, what can I tell you? So, but remember with that, we have cut two police.
12,000 would be paying 120 more.
Yes, I get that, I'm sorry. But with this, the cuts are what's important to the public. How much are you going, how much more am I going to have to pay? And what are your actual cuts? So if the public is okay with cutting two police officers and paying an extra, you know, $65, which is, you know, $50 a month. So I don't, I don't know. What do you think? You think, you think the public's okay with, with cutting all those back?
I don't, at this point, we haven't done anything. We just need to advertise.
That's the proposal, though.
Right, it's one of the two proposals.
Right, so we have one proposal that...
Which I think we should move forward with a vote, schedule more meetings, see if Mike's idea with the percentages, salaries, whether or not they can be moved, more can be moved on to the, in the non-general fund line items. And if that's permissible and legal, then maybe that's an avenue we want to look at.
But there's already salaries in there. I just want to increase the salaries, is that what you're saying?
Increase the millage rate.
The millage rate, do you have more?
Right.
If that, I've always, even when Scott Mitchell was here, I always understood you couldn't draw from them.
No.
It would have to be things that are, that you can draw from into the general fund to cover general fund expenses.
No, it has to be a recreation item.
Right, recreational.
Right.
And that's why I struggle with this Because we're already maxed out as to our percentages. And to add more percentages to recreation--
That's what I'm suggesting, though. I'm suggesting you leave the percentages the way they are and you add to the milage.
And add to the milage.
Yes.
So Scott Holbert, could I ask your opinion on that, please?
Yeah, can I get the -- there's a lot of comments going on. I'm trying to figure out--
Would you like to speak?
Could they enhance or increase the EIT?
No, it's whether or not we can increase the milage in the recreation fund to have an additional revenue on that side of the budget to cover some of the shortfall in the general side.
And not just the recreation fund, but the other funds that we have to do--
It's going to have to be a neutral, deep answer.
I'm sorry, could you speak up, please?
Back-specific, line-item-specific thing. We need to be careful with those things where-- there are some things that may possibly be in the general fund that could be pulled out. But I can't give you a definitive answer. Be a very line-item-specific, fact-specific view of what's actually being done with that money. It needs to be accounted for properly.
Absolutely.
And I'd say be very, very careful.
It's not easy.
And that's my concern. Thank you.
All right. Once again, we're just looking to advertise.
Mr. President, I have some comments, please. I had mentioned this a while back. And I think, given all of our conversations, we may want to take it into consideration again. But I just pulled up Bristol's 2020 budget, in which I believe they were -- actually, this milage is pretty close to ours. But they're now at the 35-mil mark. But in their other funds, such as their street lighting fund, they budgeted for a transfer to the general fund. They did that in the street fund, in the recreation fund, and in the refuse and street cleaning fund. So while it's not optimal, and I wouldn't say it under normal circumstances, we want to do it. If we're that hard up for money, we may want to consider it.
Mr. Barris, I think that's something that we used to do. But I think every year at the end of the year, you have to pay it back. So when your next tax payments come in, you have to refund that.
So it's borrowed?
No, that's only if it's just -- that was because it was state funds and they ordered it.
I think for those funds, too. I could be wrong, though. I could be wrong.
It would be something we can consider looking into.
Again, be creative. Be creative, but we're not doing--
I mean, this is a publicly posted budget that they did it on. It's out there. If there was something wrong with it, you know, I haven't heard anybody get locked up down there yet.
Did you say that was Bristol Borough, right?
Yes.
Well, their milage is 77,000. And ours is only 59.
There were still 35 mils for the general.
I'm sorry, because there's two separate things. I forgot. I'm sorry.
But the question is whether or not those transfers have to be paid back or not.
So Scott Holbert, are we able to do that?
I'm sorry. How are we moving forward if we're just borrowing from ourselves and moving back again? That doesn't make any sense.
Well, if it's not borrowing, it essentially allows you to utilize the other funds that have unlimited caps as opposed to the general fund that's capped at 35 mils. That's what I'm asking. They have it out there. If it's not legal, then--
I actually--
That seems to undermine the whole policy behind it.
Yes.
And maybe you can get away with it. But I think that's the wrong way to proceed.
I don't know how they can do it. If they have separate payrolls for their separate funds and you see a transfer, that employee is then working in an audible capacity that will pass an audit--
That makes sense.
--in the function to that other fund.
That makes sense.
If you don't do that, then you're in trouble. And then it's illegal. So if you have separate payrolls, that's how they do it. And while I'm talking, do we even want to talk about what your beginning January 1st fund balances are?
Zero.
I know they're zero. It's a disgrace. I'm willing to get thrown out today. It's a disgrace to make this woman on a 13-year-old computer come up with numbers on two separate budgets? You've got to be kidding me. And why isn't the idiot to do some more right-to-now acts and show another 300 pages in the past?
Thank you. I appreciate your input, Kathy. We have to move on.
Just real quick, I have one more question because that reminded me something else I was going to ask as I was looking. Where is the deficit articulated? So in other words, you'd have to articulate the deficit on the budget to show that we're still not going to roll another deficit.
So at this time, these are two balanced budgets.
Okay. So are they including the deficit that will be rolling into next year?
Yes.
Okay.
With only the experience and knowledge that I have for being here several weeks.
I just wanted to make sure it was in there. I didn't see it articulated. That's why I'm asking.
So I will say it publicly. I'm concerned with next year. I have to live, breathe, and work whatever you choose. And it will be a learning experience as to getting to know the budget much better. So if it's not exactly perfect--
Never will be.
It's because I just arrived and I'm trying to do what I can to help.
It will never be perfect, I promise.
Thank you. No, I know that. I know that. But I'm sure it's expected to be perfect. And we're trying.
Justin, do you have anything else?
My one other comment was it would be my preference to just advertise one budget with no EIT with cuts as the worst-case scenario so that we have something to work against until December and find money.
I just want to reiterate. I was looking at online about the general fund. And there are other boroughs that transfer money out of the general fund. I think the Borough of Hanover does it. There were quite a few.
But I do believe Ms. Panzio is right. It's because they can equate that work to that fund.
But we do have it. Like, we have officers when the crew is out doing water main breaks. The officers are standing there, making sure the traffic is fine. Yeah.
No, I think it's worth looking at.
Do you have more?
Do they have--
We don't have officers.
I've seen you, Chief, standing there while--
They're standing there for a few minutes. They're not directing traffic. We direct traffic. We control traffic. We don't need police officers for that. They do it over in Jersey, something as you know, Jersey. That doesn't happen much, but that's major.
I've seen you guys with the blinking lights. I have.
Occasionally working with it. Standing there, talking. But he's not directing traffic or anything like that. I'll be honest. If you want to do that, we can do that. I'll be honest, I'm not--
If it brings back the two officers, I'm all for it.
And I think that's what I'm trying to say. These items will not bring back two officers. If you really comb through these budgets, it's not going to do that by trying to rob Peter to pay Paul. It's just not. And then on top of it, now we are bound to all these restrictions. We would have to do separate payrolls for each fund. Who's going to do that? I can barely get the payroll done now. Who will do that? Again, I'm trying to be realistic and open to all suggestions. Just, you know, I'm willing to sit down and go through things. But I struggle--
After this, we're going to schedule meetings for November. We have no choice.
So Justin wanted to do just one budget. The motion reads both. So we'd have to amend that if that's the direction of going. What does everybody want to do?
I think we have to do the two.
I think so, too. Everything we have no choice. All right. Unless anybody else has anything further, we're going to schedule budget meetings in November. So Virginia, roll call, please.
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. On the motion, the first is Mrs. Sherlock and the second is Mr. Paul, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Bauer?
No.
Ms. LaMple?
Yes.